नियंत्रण जो तमन्ने स्वेच्छित करियो अन्य आप सेवावने माटे जी लगातार हमारी प्रार्थना होती तुम्हारा संतोष सेवको भक्तो दासो जी वह गुजरात माने गुजरात ने परदेश नियंत्रण पानी बहुत ही प्रार्थना ना तब मैं प्रति उत्तर आप्यों तुम्हारा दास ने विजयी वाड़ा थी सही सलामत हमारी मध्य ले आव्या सेवानो पवित्र पिता आरंभ था ये तने माटे पर तब मैं सहायन मदद करें हमें तुम्हारो भार मानिए छी इस्तुति करिए छे हमारा भाई जोश होने तो वह नहीं साथ है ना जैसा ती विश्वास यो तो वह ने परमदावत तीस साल अमत हमारी मध्य ले आव्या हमारे तुति करिए छे जे प्रिय जानो नड़िया थी हमारी मध्य आवी काया तो वह ने माटे आभार हमारा चिपोद राणा भाइयों अन्य जो पवित्र पिता बिन-बिन स्थानों नियंत्रण थी अववानी इच्छा क्या पेक्षा रखे अववाने माटे सहायन मदद कर जो तुम्हारी कृपा तो ऊपर अधिक कर जो आज ये पवित्र पिता दरेख ने विदस्त अम्नी आर्नी पाचल छुपाओ ये माटे के तुम्हें बत्ता जाओ अन्य हमें करता चाहिए हमें प्रार्थना करिए छे अभी गैला प्रत्येक पर आवनार प्रत्येक पर सर्व बारसा को ने उत्तरांगों ऊपर तुम्हारा मूल्यवान रक्त नोचन काव करो माटे के सत्रु ने देह ने अनकार ने तमाम को युक्तियों निर्णय था ये अन्य आज ये दरेख के दरेख सैतान सत्रु ने हरे लो पराजे पामे लो हमारा पुत्र ना पक्कड़े कचड़ाए लो मैं जोई सकिए ये भी हमारी आग्रह पुर्वक ने प्रार्थना ने हमारी विनंति छे पवित्र पिता की तो गावा ने माटे तब हमारी सहायन हमारी मदद करो ये माटे के मैं एक करा के तुम्हारा स्तोत्रों गाई सकिए पवित्र पिता में प्रार्थना करिए छे हमारा भाई डॉक्टर रोबेट ने माटे ना होता जो विषेक आत्मानी भरपूरी आपो देव ने मारपते तुम्हारी वाणी हमारा पवित्र पिता कानों ने मारपते हमारा अंत तो करोड़ सुदी पहुंचती करो अन्य हमने दिन अन्य नम्र तानो आत्मा आपो ये माटे के तुम्हारो वचन जी हमारे माटे छे तने हमें नम्र तथि मानी लिए स्वीकारी लिए अन्य तेनु अमल करना रहा बनिए के ज्योति करिने आवनार समय हमें पवित्र पिता तब ने प्रसन्न आपनारा बनी चाहिए ये माटे के हमारी पुत्र इच्छा प्रमाण नहीं पढ़ा मैं तुम्हारी इच्छा प्रमाण जीवन जीबिया अन्य तुम्हारी इच्छा ने जानिए समझ ये परिपूर्ण करिए माटे तब हमारी सहायन हमारी मदद कर जो ये भी हमारी आग्रह पुर्वक ने प्रार्थना ने हमारी विनंति छे पवित्र प्रार्थना कर जो ये भी हमारी आग्रह पुर्वक ने प्रार्थना ने हमारी विनंति जो पवित्र पिता जे ना दिया भी सकता पानी जो वो ऑनलाइन के जो पवित्र पिता आत्मा मारी साथ है सर्व ने तुम्हें सहायन मदद कर जो तो वह ने माटे नो राखी मुकेलो हिस्सो पढ़ते वह ने प्राप्त कराव जो ये भी पढ़ा हमारी दिन आग्रह प्रार्थना ने हमारी विनंति छे पवित्र पिता लोकल जे प्रिय जानो मानकीन कारण नथिया भी सकता तो वह ने तुम्हारी कृपा ने हाथों में स्वप्न छे तब मैं पवित्र पिता देव ने तुम्हारो निरोगी स्पष्ट करो तुम्हें यह वार रोफे का बनो साझा पानो आपो अन्य पवित्र पिता फरीना समयों नियंत्रण तो वाबी सके ये भी हमारी आग्रह पुर्वक ने प्रार्थना ने हमारी विनंति छे पवित्र पिता में खास प्रार्थना करिए छे हमारा नमन नित्य भाई ने माटे जे कहीं पवित्र पिता हाई फीवर छे तो वह ने तुम्हारो निरोगी स्पष्ट करो यह वार रोफे का बनो साझा पानो आपो अन्य तुम्हारो महिमा तुम्हारो विजयी प्रकट करावो ये भी हमारी आग्रह पुर्वक ने प्रार्थना ने हमारी विनंति छे एज प्रमाण पवित्र पिता जो वो मादा छे बीमार छे तकलीफों में छे मुसीबतों प्रश्नों छे के पवित्र पिता कहीं ने कहीं ताबिक ना रूप परिस्थिति छे तो वह ने माटे हमारी आग्रह पुर्वक ने प्रार्थना ने विनंति छे सर्व विकट परिस्थितियों ने दूर कर जो अन्य फरीना समयों नियंत्रण हाथों में स्वप्न छे तुम्हारा दास ने पर तब सहायन मदद कर जो पांच लास्ट समयों में परदेश ने देव ने सेवाओ तने तब मैं पुष्कड़ा सिर्फ वादी करी तुम्हारो भार मानिए छे इस्तुति करिए छे तो वह ने मारपते प्रकट थे इला वशनों यस आया पंचायन एक ग्यारह गुरु करे ये भी पढ़ा हमारी प्रार्थना ने विनंति छे आज ने पवित्र पिता तर्जुमा माता तुम्हारा दास ने तुम्हें सहायन मदद कर जो अन्य पवित्र पिता रात्रि तो परत खरवा मांगे छे मुसाप्रीमा साहिब मदद कर जो सही सलामत पहुंचाव जो अन्य आवती काल नहीं तो वह ने अंदावाद नहीं जे सेवाओ तने माटे पढ़ना होता जो विषेक आत्मानी भरपूरी आप जो ये भी हमारी दिन आग्रह प्रार्थना ने हमारी विनंति छे पवित्र पिता फरीने को लोकल लेवल है मैं तुम्हारी सामूहिक किया छे हमने धन्य आशीर्वाद दी समय आपो हमारी संगत तुम्हारा महिमा नो कारण बनाव अन्य आज हमें सत्रु ने हरे लो पराजे पामे लो हमारा पुत्र ना पक्कड़े कचड़ाए लो मैं जोई सकिए अन्य जे हेतु ने उद्देश्य और तब हमने लाभ आश्व हमारा जीवनों नियंत्रण परिपूर्ण था ये विश्वास यो तुम्हारा मास्ती था ये द्रोण था ये मजबूत था ये भी हमारी आग्रह पुर्वक ने प्रार्थना ने विनंति छे जो तारण अनुपव नियंत्रण छे पर तुम्हारा करण दर्शन नियंत्रण नथी तो वह जो वचन निमार्ग होते जानी सके साचू भजन अन्य पवित्र पिता तुम्हारो जे घर के जहां तुम्हारा वचनों अनुसार सगड़ी जे बाबतो माटे तुम्हारो जीवित में त्रुपया भी व्यवहार देव ने साथ ये कर जो हमारी प्रार्थना ने हमारी विनंति छे पर जो हमारी मध्य आज ये तारण अनुपव नियंत्रण नथी पापो निक्षमानिक तुम्हारो जीवित में त्रुपया भी व्यवहार देव ने साथ ये करो अन्य आज ये तुम्हें खात्री कराव के तो वो पाती अवस्था नियंत्रण छे अन्य अवस्था नियंत्रण जो मृत्यु था ये तो अनंत ना सिर्फ ने माटे छे माटे आज ये वचन तो वह ने चितवड़ी यहां पे सावधान करे दिक्कर ने जीवन ने तुमने समर्थन करवा तुम्हारे ये भी हमारी आग्रह पुर्वक प्रार्थना ने हमारी विनंति छे हमारी सहायन हमारी मदद कर जो की तो गावा ने माटे कृपा आपो वचन ने माटे सिर्फ ने मदद करो तुम्हारा दास ने तर्जुमा नियंत्रण पर सहायन मदद कर जो हमारी या विनंति हमारी या वर्ष तो दे हमारा जीवन ना दात प्रभु ईशु कृष्णा प्रेमी नाम में तुम्हारा जोड़ो में लाभ आया छे माटे सांभड़ो ने तब मैं धन्य मान्य
सॉर्ट नंबर नुकित गाइए सम नंबर 16 नया यरुशालय जो अद्भुत है पवित्र नगर वही है पास गिट चौपड़ा चौपानियों ना होए हाथ चोकर्स तुम्हारा सिद्ध पहुंचारे छे नया यरुशालय जो अद्भुत है पवित्र नगर वही है नया यरुशालय जो अद्भुत है पवित्र नगर वही है ऐसे नगर के योग हमें किया ऐसे नगर के योग हमें किया हम प्रभु ईश्वर की वतना करते हैं हम प्रभु ईश्वर की वतना करते हैं नया यरुशालय जो अद्भुत है पवित्र नगर वही है अगम्य शांति और स्वर्ग आनंद सब कुछ बाहा भरपूरी से है शांति दाता ईश्वर भुजी राजाओं का राजा राज करता है उसे राज के हमको भागीदार किया है प्रभुओं के प्रभु की स्तुति करते हैं नया यरुशालय जो अद्भुत है पवित्र नगर वही है पाप को हमारे क्षमा कर दिया कलवरी क्रूस के लहू के द्वारा से उसकी पवित्रता में भी हमको भागीदार उसने हमें किया है महिमा से परिपूर्ण हमारे ईश्वर की दिल भर के स्तुति गाते हैं नया यरुशालय जो अद्भुत है पवित्र नगर वही है पवित्र नगर नया यरुशालय सोतरता से भरपूर वो है अपने पति के लिए जो तैयार शिकारी हुई दुल्हन समान है तूने हमको दुल्हन बनाया प्रभु तेरी स्तुति हम करते हैं अलम जो अद्भुत है पवित्र नगर वही है ईश्वर हमारे साथ वास्ता रहेगा उसका डेरा हमें होगा प्रभु हमारे साथ रह कर साथ ले जाएगा स्वर्ग की ओर तूने हमसे प्रेम किया है प्रणाम तुझे को हम करते हैं नया यरुशालय जो अद्भुत है पवित्र नगर वही है गोन का पर में ईश्वर होगा और उनके आंखों से आंसू कुछ लगा प्रेत्यु शोक में लापर पीड़ा उसने नगर में बिल्कुल नहीं प्रेत्यु संसार शैतान को जीता अराधना तेरी हम करते हैं नया यरुशालय जो अद्भुत है पवित्र नगर वही है ऐसे नगर में रुख हमें किया हम प्रभु ईश्वर की वतना करते हैं हम प्रभु ईश्वर की वतना करते हैं नया यरुशालय जो अद्भुत है पवित्र नगर वही है एज गिट चौपानिया में गित नंबर 4 नगर वो है हेलो कितना सुंदर नगर वो है कितना सुंदर नगर वो है अद्भुत है जो तिर्मय प्रताप से भरा है अद्भुत है जो तिर्मय प्रताप से भरा है पवित्र 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 सब कुछ है पवित्र 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 सब कुछ है पवित्र जनवा साथ उसके रहेंगे पवित्र जनवा हम साथ उसके रहेंगे प्रभु ने जिनको लहू से खरीदा है प्रभु ने जिनको लहू से खरीदा है नगर में जाएंगे जयवंश जो बने हैं नगर में जाएंगे जयवंश जो बने हैं जयवंश है जयवंश है बढ़कर जयवंश है जयवंश है बढ़कर जयवंश है कितना सुंदर नगर वो है कितना सुंदर नगर वो है ये बातें मनुष्य के समझ के परे हैं ये बातें मनुष्य के समझ के परे हैं प्रभु के आत्मिक जन्नत सब जान जाते हैं प्रभु के आत्मिक जन्नत सब जान जाते हैं ये आत्मिक बातें हैं आत्मा समझता है ये आत्मिक बातें हैं आत्मा समझता है आत्मिक है आत्मिक है सब बातें आत्मिक है आत्मिक है आत्मिक है सब बातें आत्मिक है कितना सुंदर नगर वो है कितना सुंदर नगर वो है आत्मिक जन्नत जानते हैं वो नगर कैसा है आत्मिक जन्नत जानते हैं वो नगर कैसा है स्वाद उसका धरती पर प्रभु ने चखाया है स्वाद उसका धरती पर प्रभु ने चखाया है आनंद से सिर कर ऊपर को देखते हैं आनंद से सिर कर ऊपर को देखते हैं आनंद है आनंद है स्वर्गीय आनंद है आनंद है आनंद है स्वर्गीय आनंद है कितना सुंदर नगर वो है कितना सुंदर नगर वो है अद्भुत है जो तिर्मय प्रताप से भरा है अद्भुत है जो तिर्मय प्रताप से भरा है पवित्र पवित्र सब कुछ है पवित्र पवित्र सब कुछ है एक नंबर नुकित गाइए गुजराती चौपानिया में चौपानिया माथी एक नंबर नुकित बजिए तने हे प्रभु जी तू कृपा बजिए तने हे प्रभु जी बजिए तने हे प्रभु जी हां मेरी बुलस था ये उसे आंभजी तने हे प्रभु जी तू कृपा छे तू कृपा छे तू कृपा छे हमें बजिए आसमे बजिए तने हे प्रभु जी तू कृपा छे पाप रहित वो देवपुत्र श्राप हरना पाप रहित वो देवपुत्र श्राप हरना नम्र देवपुत्र तू आकर्षित मुझे ने तू नम्र देवपुत्र तू आकर्षित मुझे ने तू आकर्षित मुझे ने तू छे प्रेम थी भरपूर तू आकर्षित मुझे ने तू हे प्रेम और तू बजिए तने हे प्रभु जी तू कृपा छे आंभजी तने हे प्रभु तू कृपा छे करिब नम्र जिंदगी तारी चाल अग्ना करी करिब नम्र जिंदगी तारी चालाग्ना कारी चालाग्ना कारी मन रहे सदा घेरी चालाग्ना कारी मन रहे सदा घेरी भजिये तने हे प्रभु जी तू कृपा छे आ भजिये तने हे प्रभु जी तू कृपा छे समस्त रैस्ट्री सरजनहार तू सत्य देव छे समस्त रैस्ट्री सरजनहार तू सत्य देव छे तू सत्य देव छे जीवन सनातन छे तू सत्य देव छे जीवन सनातन छे भजिये तने हे प्रभु जी तू कृपा छे आ भजिये तने हे प्रभु जी तू कृपा छे सर्वतम हजारों मासमर्थ देव तू सर्वतम हजारों मासमर्थ देव तू समर्थ देव तू देव्य शिक्षक मार तू समर्थ देव तू देव्य शिक्षक मार तू भजिये तने हे प्रभु जी तू कृपा छे आ भजिये तने हे प्रभु जी तू कृपा छे तू कृपा छे हमें भजिये आसमे तू कृपा छे हमें भजिये आसमे भजिये तने हे प्रभु जी तू कृपा छे आ भजिये तने हे प्रभु जी तू कृपा छे बाइबल कोर्स गाइए उबाद थाइये अन्ने बाइबल कोर्स गाइशू जो लाइन मा बैठा ना महान पुष्टक महान पुष्टक छे वचन दिला सानो जीवते समायलो दुख दर्दो ने माटे ते वचन सदा पे तो विश्वास मो कज बाइबल मां The Grand Old Book The Grand Old Book You'll find the words of comfort wherever you may look Sorrows or in pain His promises are plain So keep on believing in the Grand Old Book प्रार्थना करिए सर्व कृपाना परमेश्वर इब्राहिम इसाकने इसराय जीवता परमेश्वर वचनो ने अपनार करारो ने पूर्ण करना ऋष्वर तमार उपजन करिए छे स्तुति आराधना करिए छे हमारा प्रभु ईश्वर प्रतिज्ञा करी छे ओ वेलो पांचवा आऊंछू हूं तमार माट जग्ना तैयार करवाने जाऊं अन्ने जो हूं जय ने जग्ना तैयार करी छे तो हूं पांचवा आविश अन्ने तमने मारी पास है लई जैश प्रभु तमारी स्तुति हो जे वचनो अम्मणा सुदी तमे तमारा लोक नी साथे करिया छे आप्या छे ए करारो ने वचरो ने अक्षर सा तमे पूरा करिया छे अन्ना तमारी प्रतिज्ञा पन तमे जल्दी पूरी करवाना छो तेन माटे तमारी स्तुति हो तमारा नाम ने जाई हो प्रभु मैं तमारो आभार मानिए छे तमारा आगमन ने माटे तमारा लोक तैयार थाई एवी तमारी इच्छा छे अन्ने इटला माटे प्रभु आ सेवाओ नो तमे प्रबंध करवाने सारो जे कृपा बक्शी एन माटे तमारी स्तुति हो तमार दास ने पन तमे हमारी मध्ये सुरक्षित लाविया तेन माटे हमें तमारो आभार मानिए छे अबे हमें नम्र थाई प्रार्थना करिए छे प्रभु जे वचनो तमे तमारा दास ने आप्या छे मो घाड़ी ने बोलवाने कृपा आपो अनुवाद मा सहाय करो अन्ने हमें प्रार्थना विनंति करिए छे प्रभु भाषा ने कारणे कोई ने पन न हिस्सो के भाग मड़या वगर रहे नहीं ये हमारा प्रभु निष्वर सर्व भटकता विचारो ने विश्वास्ती प्रभु ईशु कृष्णी कैद नी अंदर आधिनता मा हमें लाविए छे अन्ने हमारी प्रार्थना छे प्रभु थोड़ो समय जे तमारी उपस्थिति मा हमें बैसी छे ये हमारो माटे अनंदकारी क्लाप दाई बने जो यहां हजर थाई शक्या हमें एक-एक ने माटे हृदय थिया भारी छे जो प्रभु हजर थाई शक्या दरेखे दरेख ने एन न हिस्सो ने भाग आपवम आवे अंदकार नी बदी शक्तियो ने प्रभु ईशु ना सामर्थि ना में बांता एन मूल्यवान रक्त ना छंडकाव लेता अन्ने तमारो अभिषेक ने नीचे विश्वास्ती पुत्तने लावता हमारी या प्रार्थना अन्ने स्तुति प्रभु ईशु ना नाम मा सांबड़ी मानियो करो आमें
प्राइज लॉर्ड एवरीवन इन द नेम मोस्ट हाई नेम ऑफ लॉर्ड जीसस क्राइस्ट
अपरा प्रभु ईशु ना महान नाम मा सर्व प्रेमी जय मसीकी
I praise God for giving me another opportunity and privilege to stand before you and preach the word of God
एक नानी सूचना जो नीचे बैसी शक्ता हो एवा हो तो अगर बैश्सो जेती करीन पांचवड़ा आउनार जे व्रुद्ध लोको छे ए लोको नीचे एन ने बैश्वू मुश्किली पड़े छे माटे जे नीचे बैसी शक्य वो हो कृपा करे नीचे बैश्सो थैंक यू अन्ने अगर अगर आऊंछो जेती पांचवड़ा आउनार ने बैश्वानी जग्ना मड़े
I praise God for giving me another opportunity and privilege to stand before you and preach the word of God
प्रभु तमारी समक्ष भारे ने प्रचार करवानो देव नु वचन आपवानिया तक मने आपी माटे हूं प्रभु ना भार मानूछू
Because of covid, we used to gather online but God has given me another opportunity to stand before you in person
अन्ने कोविड ने कारणे अपरे ऑनलाइन एकठा मड़ी शक्ता हथा परंतु प्रभु तक आपी एन कारणे अपरे व्यक्ति गत रिते पन एकठा थाई शक किया छे
So it is very glad to meet to meet all of you in person
मट व्यक्ति गत रिते आपस सर्व ने मड़ी ने जोइ ने हूं बहु अनंदी छू
So let us turn to the theme words God has granted to these meetings
आ सेवा ने माटे प्रभु जे आधार वचन आपियू छे ते तरफ आबिए
Paul Sepizal Philipians Chapter 3 Vers 20
प्रेरित पाउल फिलिप्पो ने लखेलो पत्र एनो त्रिजो अध्याय अन्ने तैनी विश्मी कलम
Let us read all together
अपरे सर्व साथे मड़ी ने ए वचन वाचिए
Philipians 3:20
फिलिप्पो ने पत्र त्रिजो अध्याय अन्ने तैनी विश्मी कलम
For our conversion is I have an विवाद अगर तार नामी इल्लिपर ईशु कृष्णी Lord Jesus Christ Big of this is this thing words and use it in mighty ways so that we may be prepared for his coming
प्रभु आ आधार वचन न्याशिर्वादित करे अन्ने ने सामर्थ्य साथे वापरे जेती अपरे प्रभु ना पुणरागमन ने माटे तैयार थाइये
People are very eager to know what happens to them in future
भविष्य मा मारुशूत थसे ए जानवा लोको घणा आतूर होइ छे
So they want to know what happens tomorrow that's why they will have the thought in them always
अन्ने काले शूत थसे ए जानवा माटे लोको नित्य विचार करता होइ छे
And that's why many people they approach
वॉइस प्रॉब्लम
That's why people approach the truth sayers and palm readers
माटे जे भविष्य भाकना राव हो ए सात्ता होइ छे
They want to know what happens to them in future
भविष्य मा तेम ने शूत थसे ते जानवा तेवो आतूर होइ छे
This thought always troubles them
अन्ने आ विचार तेम ने नित्य परेशान करता होइ छे
And they will be filled with fears about this future
अन्ने भविष्य ना विचार थी तेवो चिंतित के बीक मा होइ छे
That's why they approach such people in this world
माटे अवा जगत मा जे भविष्य भाकनार लोको तेम नी पास है तेवो जता होइ छे
That's why with the sad thing is these people they encash the fear of the people
अन्ने दुख नी वात ए छे के अवा लोको लोको नी जे बीक हो एन बधारी दे छे
So dear brothers and sisters but the Bible gives us very detailed way what hap- what is going to happen in the future
माटे वाला हो बाइबल भविष्य मा अपन ने शूत वानू छे ए विषय बहु साफ-साफ कहे छे
Bible gives us very detailed way what is going to happen to this world
आ जगत नु शूत वानू छे देवी शे बाइबल अपन ने सब इष्टार कहे छे
And we are so privileged people, we are in the plan of God, everything will go according to his plan
अन्ने अपरे घणा भाग्यशारी लोक छे के अपरे देव नी योजना मा छे अन्ने जे कई थवानू छे ए बद्दी देव नी योजना प्रमाणेश्त वानू छे
So there are almost fifteen important things going to happen to this world
अन्ने एवी पंदर अगत्य नी बाबतो छे जे आ जगत मा बनवानी छे
According to the great wisdom of God, he has planned these things and he prepared this timetable for the world
प्रभु ये पुत्तन महाग्नान मा आ जगत ने माटे एक योजना घड़ी छे अन्ने आ बाबतो ने माटे तन तैयारी करी छे
The first important thing that is going to happen is the church will be taken up
अन्ने जे पहली अगत्य नी बाबत बनवानी छे ते ए छे के मंड़ी उंचकाई जशे
That we call, the Bible calls it as a rapture
बाइबल तेने उंचकाई जाऊ के इंग्लिश मा रैप्चर ते कहे
We will discuss and talk on the The second thing immediately after the rapture, the thing will happen is Antichrist will be revealed
अन्ने उंचकाई प्रभु ना लोक उंचकाई जशे त्यारबाद जे तत्काल बिजी बाबत बन छे ते प्र- जे कृष्ण विरोधी छे ते प्रकट्ठ छे
You can see that in 2nd Thessalonians Chapter 2 Verse 8:9
बिजा थेसालोनी कना बिजा अध्याय नी आठ एन नव कलम मा ए वात जोइ छे
After that, there will be great tribulation on this earth And see this in Revelation Chapter 6 to 10
बाबतो प्रक्टिकरण ना छठ्ठा अध्याय थी दश्मा अध्याय सुदी अपरे जोइ छे
The fourth thing that going to happen here is the Great War Armageddon
तोही अगत्य नी वात आ पृथ्वी पर बनवानी छे ते हार्मा गिदन नी मोटी लड़ाई
So we can see about this in Revelation Chapter 16 and Verse 16
प्रक्टिकरण ना सोढ़ मा अध्याय नी सोढ़ मी कलम मा आ वात अपरे जोइ छे
And in Book of Revelation Chapter 14 also we can see that
त्यारबाद प्रक्टिकरण ना चौध़्मा अध्याय मा अपन ए वात अपरे जोइ छे
And in the mid-heaven, we are going to be, the fifth thing that happens is Christ is going to judge this people
अन्ने पांच मी वात जे बनवानी छे ते मध्ये आकाश मा प्रभु पुत्तन लोक नो न्यायी करवानो छे
So dear brothers and sisters, we are going to receive the rewards for our work on this earth
माटे प्रिय भाइयो अन्ने बहनो जे कामो अपरे आ पृथ्वी पर प्रभु माटे करिया छे तेनो अपरे बदलो मेड़वाना छे
We can see this in Revelation Chapter 14 from 14 to 20
प्रक्टिकरण ना चौध़्मा अध्याय नी चौध़्मी कलम थी विश्मी कलम सुदी आ वातो जोइ छे
After that, there will be marriage of the lamb
त्यारबाद हलवान नो लगन नो समय आउ छे
We can see that in Book of Revelation Chapter 19 from 7 to 9
अन्ने प्रक्टिकरण ना ओगणिश मा अध्याय नी सात मी कलम थी नव मी कलम सुदी अपरे वात वाचिए छे
So the seventh thing that is going to happen is the resurrection of the believers that believed in the time of tribulation
माटे सात मी बिना जे बनवानी छे ते जे विपत्ति ना समय मा विश्वासीय मरण पामया हथा तेवो नु पुणरुद्धान थसे
That is written in Book of Revelation Chapter 20 from 4 to 6
प्रक्टिकरण ना विश्मा अध्याय नी चार थी छह कलम मा ए वात लखेली छे
And the eighth thing that is going to happen is the disposition of the evil one Saturn will be bound and will be taken into the custody
अन्ने आठ मी वात जे बनवानी छे ते के जे दुष्ट शतान छे तेने बांधवा मा आउ छे अन्ने तेने खाड़ा मा के अग्निकुण मा नाखवा मा आउ छे
We can see that in Book of Revelation Chapter 14, 19 to 20
अन्ने प्रक्टिकरण ना पुष्टक ना ओगणिश मा अध्याय मा अपरे ते वाच- वाचिए छे
And also in Book of Revelation Chapter 20, Verse 1 and 2
भड़ी प्रक्टिकरण विश्मो अध्याय पहली अन्ने बिजी कलम मा अपन वाचिए छे
And after that, the glorious thing, the thousand years, we are going to rule along with the Jesus Christ
अन्ने त्यारबाद एक हजार वर्ष सुदी प्रभु ईशु कृष्णी साथे अपरे राज करवाना छे
So this is written in Revelation Chapter 20 from Verse 7
अन्ने प्रक्टिकरण ना विश्मा अध्याय मा पहली कलम थी सात मी कलम सुदी अपरे ते वात वाचिए छे
The tenth thing that is going to happen is again the Saturn will be revealed, relieved
दश्मी वात जे फरी बनवानी छे ते ए छे शतान फरी एक वार प्रकट्ठ छे
Then after that, there will be final rebellion against Jesus Christ
अन्ने त्यारबाद प्रभु ईशु कृष्णी सामे छेवट नो बड़वो थसे
So dear brothers and sisters, after that, there will be great wide-thrown judgment
अन्ने त्यारबाद श्वेत सिहासन नो न्याय थसे
We can see that in Book of Revelation Chapter 20, Verse 11 to 15
अन्ने प्रक्टिकरण ना विश्मा अध्याय नी अखियार मी कलम थी पंदर मी कलम सुदी अपरे ते वाचिए छे
Then the earth will be burned up
त्यारबाद पृथ्वी ने बाड़ी नाखवा मा आउ छे
They will be taken away like a mat
अन्ने जे रिते अपरे कपड़ू वाड़ी लिए छे प्रमाणे वाड़ी लेवा मा आउ छे
We can see this in Chapter 2nd Peter, Chapter 3, Verse 3 to 12
बिजी पीतर त्रिजो अध्याय त्रिजी कलम थी बार मी कलम सुदी अपरे ते वाचिए छे
And after the final thing is new heaven and new earth will be, will, we are going to receive that
अन्ने त्यारबाद छेवटे नव आकाश अन्ने नवी पृथ्वी प्रकट्ठ छे
We can see that in the Book of Revelation Chapter 21 and 22
प्रक्टिकरण ना एकवीस अन्ने बावीस मा अध्याय मा अपरे ते जोइ छे
These are the things that God has prepared according to his great wisdom And he prepared a timetable for all these things to happen in this, on this earth
पुत्तन महाग्नान मा प्रभु या सर्व वातो नी योजना करी छे अन्ने समय अनुसार आ बद्दी वात होते पूर्ण करनार छे
So dear brothers and sisters, these are written in the word of God and definitely all these things are going to happen
मट प्रिय भाइयो अन्ने बहनो आ बदु देव ना वचन मा लखेलू छे अन्ने ए बद्दी वातो पूर्ण थवानी छे
The earth and heaven may pass away but the word of God will never fail
आकाश अन्ने पृथ्वी जता रहे छे पन देव नी वातो जती रहे छे नहीं
So these are the things going to happen definitely and the people on this earth will experience all these things
माटे आ सरो वातो बनवानी छे ने पृथ्वी पर जे रहता लोको छे ते ए वातो जोवाना छे
But for our believers, for the believers, the important thing what we need to know is rapture
परंतु विश्वासीय ने माटे जे महत्व नी वात जानवा जेवी Parantu Vishvasyo Ne Maate Je Mahatvani Vat Jaanva Je Vich Cheh Te Unchkai Jawu Te Vat Cheh.
So we need to know about it, we need to understand it and the important thing, we have to prepare for that.
And Je Agatyani Vat Apde E Vishy Jaanvu Joiye E Maate Teyyar Karvi Joiye E Saru Ke Apde Pan Unchkai Jawie.
So it is going to be a wonderful day for believers.
And Vishvasyo Ne Maate Bao Adbut Divas Ashcheh.
It is a day of excitement for believers.
Vishvasyo Ne Maate E Bao Utej Nanon Divas Ashcheh.
It is going to be joyful day for the believers.
Vishvasyo Ne Maate Te Bao Ananno Divas Ashcheh.
This evening, I would like to describe little in a detailed way about the rapture.
Maate Aje Sandhya E Unchkai Jawa Vishy Thodi Ek Vato Vistrut Ma Jawana Cheh.
Now we have received the theme words that we have to look for the Lord's return.
Apde Apda Aadhar Vachan Ma Joi Gaya Ke Apda Prabuna Punragaman Ni Apde Vat Jawani Cheh.
That means we need to look for the rapture.
Bija Shabdha Ma Apde Unchkai Jawani Vat Jawani Cheh.
So in order to understand how to look for his, for his coming, we need to know all these things.
Prabuna Agman Ne Maate Apde Vat Joiye Maate A Vato Jaanvi Jaruhi Cheh.
So rapture is not written in English, but it is a Latin word.
Awe Rapture Je Shabdha Cheh Te Kyaai Lakhelo Nati Pan Hi Latin Shabdha Cheh.
In Latin, it is written raptura, raptor.
And Ractuna Raptor Namno Shabdha Latin Bahasa Ma Cheh.
The meaning is being carried away.
And Je Gujarati Ma Apde Kaiye Unchkai Jawu Te Vite Vat Cheh.
So being carried away on clouds.
And A Vishvasyo Vadra Ma Unchkai Jashcheh.
So all the believers who ever accepted Jesus Christ as a personal savior, one day they are going to be carried away on heavens into eternal glory.
Je Sarv E Prabhu Isha Krspar Vishvas Karine Vishvasyo Thaya Cheh Te O Akashi Mayma Ma Ek Divas Unchkai Jashcheh.
So we can see that in 1 Thessalonians, chapter 4.
Pela Thessana 4 Adhyai Ma Apde Vat Joiye Cheh.
From 13 to 16, in a very detailed way, Paul describes those things.
And Pela Thessalonika Na 4 Adhyani 3 Mi Kalam Thi 12 Kalam Sudhi Paul Vistrut Rite E Vato Kecheh.
1 Thessalonians, chapter 3.
Pelu Thessaloniki.
Chapter 3.
Tri Jo Adhyai.
From 13 to 16, it is written, but we read few verses. Yes, forgive me, chapter 4, from 13 to 16.
4 Adhyai 3 Mi Kalam Thi 16 Mi Kalam Sudhi.
Verse 16, "For the Lord himself shall descend from heaven with a shout, with the voice of the archangel and with the trump of God, and the dead in Christ shall rise first."
16 Mi Kalam Ke Hamke Prabhu Pothe Garjana Sahith, Pramukdut Ni Vaan Sahith, Tatha Devna Ran Shingra Sahith Akash Ma Thi Utar Shcheh. And Krishth Ma Je O Muila Shcheh Te O Pratham Utcheh.
Verse 17, "Then we which are alive and remain shall be caught up together with them in the clouds to meet the Lord in the air, and so shall we ever be with the Lord."
Pachi Apde Mana Je O Jivta Reenara Cheh Te O Gagan Ma Prabun Ne Morva Saru, Te O Ni Saathhe Vadra Ma Tanai Jawishu Ande Emsada Prabuni Saathhe Rayishu.
So observe this word, we shall be caught up together with them in the clouds.
A Shabdho Par Dhyanapo Te O Ni Saathhe Vadra Ma Tanai Jawishu.
So this is called rapture, this is the meaning of rapture.
A To Rapture No Arth Cheh.
So dear brothers and sister, for that day, we need to look and we have to prepare for that.
Maate Divas Ni Apde Vat Jawi Joiye Ande Ene Maate Teyyar Karvi Joiye.
So in the Bible, there we can see there are so many rappers happened.
Bible Ma Ghana Bada Unchkai Jawana Banavo Banyaa Cheh.
So we are going to have another two important rapture in the future.
And Bija Bhavishyama Be Agatyana Unchkai Jawana Banavo Banwana Cheh.
Hanok was taken up into heaven, that is also symbolic to rapture.
And Hanok Ne Akash Ma Lay Leva Ma Avyo E Pan Unchkai Jawa Je Vich Binacheh.
So this is written in Genesis, chapter 5, verse 23 and 24.
Utpati Na 5 Ma Adhyani 23 Ande 24 Mi Kalam Ma A Vat Apde Vanchiye Cheh.
And Elia was taken up into heaven, this is also symbolic to rapture.
And Elia Ne Pan Akash Ma Unchki Leva Ma Avyo E Pan Unchkai Jawana Pratik Rupel Cheh.
We can see that in 2 Kings, chapter 2, verse 11.
Bija Rajana Bija Adhyani 11 Mi Kalam Ma Apde Vat Vanchiye Cheh.
Jesus Christ also after his resurrection, he was taken up into heaven.
Pun Putana Punruth Thaan Pachi Prabhu Isha Krsne Pan Akash Ma Unchki Leva Ma Avya.
Luke's Gospel, chapter 24, verse 50 and 51, we can see, this is also symbolic to rapture.
Luke Ni Swartana 24 Ma Adhyani 50 Ande 51 Mi Kalam Ma Apde Vanchiye Cheh. And A Pan Unchkai Jawana Binajevij Binacheh.
In 2 Corinthians, chapter 12, verse 1 to 4, Paul describes about his experience.
Bija Karantina 12 Ma Adhyani Pali Kalam Thi 4 Thi Kalam Sudhi Paul Putana Anubhav Ne Varnave Cheh.
He, he has written that, "I know one man, he went into third heaven."
And Te Ham Laxta Ke Cheh Umeva Ek Maanas Ne Orkhoo Choo Je Na Trija Akash Ma Upadi Leva Ma Avyo.
This also symbolic to rapture.
A Pan Unchkai Jawana Pratik Rup Cheh.
So dear brothers and sisters, all these things explains what is rapture.
A Badi Vato Apne Betave Cheh Ke Unchkai Jawu Te Shu Cheh.
So we will be taken up, we will be snatched away from this world.
And Apde A Jagat Ma Thi Tanai Jawishu.
So dear brothers and sisters, after preaching the gospel to the Ethiopian, the Philip immediately disappeared.
And Je Khojyo Hato Te Ne Swarta Prachar Karya Pachi Philip Acanak Adreshya Thai Gayo.
So in the Book of Acts, chapter 8, Philip suddenly after giving baptism, he was no more there, he was disappeared.
And Philip E Khojane Baptism Ma Apya Pachi Acanak Te Adreshya Thai Gayo Te Te Tyaan Dekhayo Nai.
This also tells about what is the rapture.
And A Pan Unchkai Jawu Shu Cheh Te Betave Cheh.
And also we can see in the life of Lord and his family, Lord and family.
And Tiarbad Lot Ande Te Na Kutum Vishy Pan Apde Vanchiye Cheh.
In Genesis, chapter 19.
Utpati Na 19 Ma Adhyai Ma.
The angels of God, they were snatched away, the family of Lord from the Sodom and Gomorrah.
And 19 Ma Anubhav Thi Lot Na Kutum Ne Tan Ke Tyaan Thi Unchki Li Da Ke Tyaan Thi Hamne Taani Kaadiya.
After they were snatched away from that place, the, the fire came from heaven and burned the cities of Sodom and Gomorrah.
And Te O Na Tyaan Thi Bahar Kaadiya Pachi Sodom Na Gomorrah Na Upar Ag Na Gandak Varshya.
So the, all these things describes about what is going to be the rapture.
And A Badi Babato Unchkai Jawu Shu Cheh Te Ne Varnave Cheh.
In the same way, all the believers will be snatched away from this earth.
E Jrite A Pruthvi Sarv Vishvasyo Te Unchkai Jashcheh.
From this world will be suddenly disappear.
And A Jagat Ma Thi Acanak Te O Adreshya Thai Jashcheh.
So dear brothers and sisters, this is the rapture of the church.
Maate Priya Bhaiyo Beno A To Mandri Nu Unchkai Jawu Cheh.
And after that, of the, after tribulation, even the two prophets also will be, they will be, receive the rapture.
And Duk Sahana Pachi Be Je Prabodako Cheh Te O Pan Unchkai Jawana Cheh.
So this is going to be a marvelous and wonderful day for us.
And A Divas Apde Maate Bao Adbut Ande Asharya Karak Divas Ashcheh.
So I would like to tell little bit more about this rapture.
Maate A Unchkai Jawa Vishy Thodi Ek Badare Vato Keva Chau Choo.
The Christ will come into mid heaven.
Krishth Prabhu Te Madhy Akash Ma Au Cheh.
Just now, we have read in 1 Thessalonians, chapter 14, of chapter 4, 16 to 17.
Amraas Pela Thessalonika Na 4 Adhyani 16 Ande 70 Kalam Ma Apde Te Vanchiyo.
So we need to understand the difference between rapture and second coming.
Maate Unchkai Jawu Ande Prabhu Isha Nu Punragaman E Beni Vache Tafaavat Cheh Te Apde Joiye Cheh.
Rapture means he will come only into the mid heaven.
And Unchkai Jawu To Tiarre Ban Cheh Jarre Prabhu Isha Madhy Akash Ma Au Cheh.
The second coming is going to keep his foot on this earth.
And Jarre Prabhu Isha Farivar Prakath Ashcheh Tare Te Mna Pag A Pruthvi Upar Farimukashmuk Cheh.
So we should not be confused between these two things.
Maate Abbe Binao Vishy Apde Gunchvan Ma Padwani Jaru Nati.
So we can see very clearly, in the rapture, only the believers can see Jesus Christ.
And Vishvasyo Matraj Unchkai Jawana Samaye Prabhu Isha Ne Joi Shakcheh.
The unbelievers will not see him.
And Je A Vishvasyo Cheh Te O Prabhu Isha Ne Joi Shakwana Nati.
So only believers will see and they will be snatched away into the heaven.
Matra Vishvasyo Te Ne Joshcheh Ande Akash Ma Tanai Jashcheh.
But in the second coming, every person, whether believers or, they will see Jesus Christ.
Parantu Jarre Prabhu Isha Fariprakath Ashcheh Tiarre Vishvasi Hoi Ke A Vishvasi Hoi Dare Ek Aank Te Ne Joshcheh.
Let us turn to Matthew's Gospel, chapter 24.
Matni Swartana 24 Ma Adhyai Taraf Avie.
Let us read verse 30.
Ande Ni 3 Mi Kalam.
Matthew's Gospel, 24, verse 30.
Matni Swarta Te Na 24 Ma Adhyai Ande Te Ni 3 Mi Kalam.
And then shall appear the sign of man in heaven and then shall all the earth mount and they shall see the son of man coming in the clouds of heaven with power and great glory.
And Tiarre Maanas Na Dekrani Nishani Akash Ma Dekha Cheh. And Tiarre Perna Sagda Kudo Shokkar Cheh. Ne Maanas Na Dekrane Parakram Tatha Mota Mayma Sahith Te O Akash Na Meg Par Av To Dekcheh.
So dear brothers and sisters, this is, this verse talks about second coming.
And Aje Vachan Cheh Te To Prabuna Dvitiya Agman Vishy Bole Cheh.
So everyone will see the king of kings and lord of lords, Lord Jesus Christ, coming in the glory.
Dare Ek Aank Prabhu Isha Krsne Ena Mayma Ma Al To Joshcheh.
They will be troubled so much in their heart.
And Tiarre Te O Chhati Kuttcheh.
They will beat their chest.
And Tiarre Te O Gunchva Cheh Na Chhati Kuttcheh.
They will cry.
And Redcheh.
They will fled away everywhere.
And Aam Te M Te O Nasijashcheh.
That is going to be the second coming.
E To Prabhu Isha Na Punragamanne Samaye Bancheh.
We will come along with Lord Jesus Christ.
Apde Prabhu Isha Krsni Saathhe Prakath Ayishu.
So first thing must happen is rapture.
Maate Je Pali Binabanwanii Cheh Te To Unchkai Jawanii Cheh.
Christ will appear in the mid heaven.
Krishth Madhy Akash Ma Prakath Ashcheh.
The believers will see him.
Vishvasyo Te Ne Joshcheh.
They will be taken away.
And Te O Tyaan Unchkai Jashcheh.
They will snatched away.
Te O Tanai Jashcheh.
They will disappear from this earth.
And A Acanak A Dunya Ma Thi Te O Adreshya Thai Jashcheh.
So there are going to be lot of confusion on this earth.
And A Pruthvi Par Bahare Gunchvaro Thai Jashcheh.
So they, the neighbors, the believers, the neighbors of the believers will be troubled.
Vishvasyo Na Padoshio Te O Gunchva Jashcheh.
The friends of the believers will be troubled because they, they can't understand what happened to the peace people.
Vishvasyo Na Mitro Te O Pan Gunchva Jashcheh Karan Ke I Loko Ne Shuth Ayute Te O Samji Shakche Nai.
So dear brothers and sisters, that's why in this world nowadays, people who believe rapture, they are doing some, they are taking some steps.
Maate Je A Dunya Ma Unchkai Jawani Vat Ma Vishvas Karay Cheh Te O Ketla Ek Pagla Bharta Hoi Cheh.
So I heard that the people are, they are going to keep two pilots in the flight because if one taken away, another will take up that flight.
And Be Pilot Viman Ma Raakeh Cheh Ke Maate Ke Kadach Ek Khenchai Jai Ke Unchkai Jai Tabi Jo Viman Ne Sambhadi Shakke.
Even in the trains, they are keeping two drivers.
And Gadi Ma Pan Be Chalako Raakeh Cheh.
So dear brothers and sisters, all these things, they tell us the, the rapture, about the rapture.
And A Badi Babato Apne Unchkai Jawa Sabandi Kecheh.
There will be lot of commotion on this earth.
A Pruthvi Upar Bahare Gunchvaro Thai Jashcheh.
So entire world will be filled with confusion.
Aki Dunya Te Gunchvara Thi Bhaai Jashcheh.
They may think that the great earthquake happened and swallowed the people.
And E U Pan Loko Mancheh Ke Muto Dharthe Kam Thayo Ande Loko Ne Dharthe Gori Gai.
So people say the, the men of God, they say, at that point, the Antichrist will come and he will pass by this world.
And Devna Sevo Koi Pramani Kecheh Eve Samaye Krishth Virodi Prakath Ashcheh Ande Jagatna Loko Ne Shantvana Apcheh.
By his words, by his talent, he is going to explain to the people the false things and he is going to create a false peace on this earth.
And Putana Shabdha Thi Putana Gnan Thi Te Kotti Shanti Apcheh Ande Loko Ne Te Bhama Au Cheh.
So how can he speak to entire world?
And Ke Rite Ti Aki Dunya Ne Sambodi Shakcheh.
So if you see in these days, the social media is developed in an external way, the televisions are developed in an external way. So he can speak any place and he can reach all the people of this world.
And A Divas Ma Je Social Media Bao Je Adbut Rite Vadi Reya Cheh Ne Karane Tamme Koi Ek Jagya Ma Thi Bolo Pan Aki Dunya Tamne Sambhadi Shakke Cheh.
So in that way, he is going to be revealed after the rapture.
And E Rite Unchkai Gaya Pachi Te Prakath Ashcheh.
The second thing that we, that going to happen during the rapture is.
And Unchkai Jawa Binama Je Bijji Babat Banwanii Cheh.
So just now, we have read in 1 Thessalonians, chapter 4, verse 15 and 16.
Pela Thessana 4 Adhyani 15 Ne 16 Kalam Ma Apde Vanchi Gaya.
The first, the dead will raise.
Saw Ti Pela Je Muela Te O Pacha Utcheh.
So they are going to receive the resurrection bodies.
Te O Ne Punruth Thaan Pamelu Sharir Murcheh.
So many people, they, they don't believe the, the dead will raise.
And Ghana Loko Punruth Thaan Ma Mantha Nati.
So even in Book of Job, the wise man question, how can a dead man will come into life?
And Ayubna Pustak Ma Pan A Sval Puchva Ma Avyo Cheh Ke Ke Rite Muela Pacha Uthe.
So only the, the biggest question that is tormenting the people is, can a dead person raise again?
Maate Loko Ne Je Muto Prashna Aje Satave Cheh Te A Cheh Shu Muela Pacha Uthe Cheh.
But one day going to come, all the dead will raise.
Pan Ek Divas Avi Reho Cheh Jarre Sarv Mruthako Pacha Utcheh.
The believers will raise to, to be with the Lord.
And Je Vishvasyo Cheh Prabuni Saathhe Reva Maate Te O Pacha Hamne Uthadva Ma Au Cheh.
The unbelievers will raise to receive the punishment and judgment.
And Je A Vishvasyo Cheh Te O Ne Danke Nyai Meravane Maate Te O Ne Pacha Uthadva Ma Au Cheh.
So the day, the believers will raise on that day.
Vishvasyo Ne Te Divase Pacha Uthadva Ma Au Cheh.
And in the Bible, we can see so many examples that people came out of death.
Bible Ma Ghana Bada Udaharano Joiye Cheh Ke Jhaan Loko Maran Ma Thi Pacha Uthea Cheh.
So the widow's son was raised by Eliza.
Vidhva No Je Dekro Te Ni Te Elia Ni Marfate Ande Sajivan Karva Ma Avyo.
And the, the son of great woman was raised by prophet Eliza, Elisha.
And Sunem Ni Stri No Je Sunem Stri No Je Dekro Ande Elisha Ni Marfate Sajivan Karva Ma Avyo.
By, even by the mortal remainings of Eliza, the person was raised.
And Elisha Na Hadka Ne Adakva Thi Ek Marelo Maanas Farisajivan Thayo.
Jesus Christ raised the young girl.
And Isha Krs Te E Juwan Chokri Ne Pachi Uthadi.
And the large rest came out of the tomb.
And Large Rest Ne Kabar Ma Thi Bahar Kaadiyo.
Even the son of nine, the woman raised.
And Nine Nagar Ni Vidhva Na Juwan Ne Pan Prabhu Isha Ve Pacha Uthadiyo.
So even Paul raised the young man.
And Paul E Pan Je Juwan Mari Gayo To Ene Pacha Uthadiyo.
All these things are proving us that one day the dead will raise.
A Bada Je Binabano Apne Maate Sabit Karay Cheh Ke Ek Divas Muela Pacha Utcheh.
So this is what the Bible says.
Bible Apne E Jvach Shikwecheh.
So many people, they think these are all some mythical things.
And Ghana Loko Kecheh A Badi Parikatha O Cheh.
So but dear brothers and sisters, these are, this is the truth, one day the dead will raise.
Pan Ek Divas Muela Pacha Utcheh E Hakikat Cheh.
So they are going to receive the body, the resurrection bodies.
And Te O Ne Punruth Thaan Pamelu Sharir Murcheh.
Even the living believers, they will be, they receive, their bodies will transform and they will receive the glorious body.
And Je Vishvasyo Jivta Ashcheh Prabuna Agmanne Samaye To Te O Na Shariro Badlay Jashcheh Na Te O Na Shariro Maymavan Thashcheh.
Let us turn to Philippians, chapter 3, verse 20.
Philippi Ona Patra Trijo Adhyai Na Te Ni 20 Mi Kalam.
Paul says to Philippians, chapter 3, verse 21.
Philippi Trijo Adhyai Na Te Ni Ek 20 Mi Kalam.
Who shall change our wild body that it may be fashioned like unto his glorious body, according to the working whereby he is able even to subdue all things and to himself.
Te Je Samarthya Thi Sarv Ne Putane Adin Karii Shakheh Cheh Te Pramane Apde Adhmaavastama Na Sharir Nu E U Rupantar Karcheh Ke Te Te Na Maymavan Sharir Na Jevu Thai.
So our Christ is Almighty God, by his power is going to take while mort is like his body, the Lord is body.
Apde Prabhu Isha Te Sarv Samarth Ishwar Cheh Ande Putana Samarthya Dwara Apde Adhmaavastama Na Sharir Nu Te Na Maymavan Sharir Jevu Te Rupantar Karcheh.
So like Christ, when he rose again on third day, we are going to receive same body.
And Je Rite Krishth Te Ena Punruth Thanna Samaye Maymavan Sharir Meerviu E U Sharir Apne Morva Nu Cheh.
So this is a very wonderful thing.
And Bao Adbut Babat Cheh.
This body can go in a vehicle. This body can go, uh, vehicles to go from one place to another.
Ane a ev adbut shariro shet, jen karun, tev beetma thaini pan aar par jai shake shet.
How can we say that?
Apna kay rite hum kay shakhi.
One day, the disciples worked, they closed the doors, and they were praying together in a room.
Ek divas shishyo, te band bharen ne pratsna karta hata.
Suddenly, Christ came and stood in the, in their midst.
Aachanak isu krish taavi ne tevni vachma ubharaya.
They were filled with fear, they thought it is a demon.
Ane tev tev beek thi bharpur thai gaya, karun ke tev ne manvala gaya, ke tev ma koi atma ne juve shet.
Do not be troubled, do not afraid.
Parantu pravu iswe kayu ke biho ma.
Then he showed his hands and his left foot.
Ane tayar baat, ene putana hat, tev ne ne kunk dekhaadiya.
So he showed the, the nail, the, and the pierced on the, on their hands and foot.
Ane je hat ane pag ma khila jadiya hata, te tev ne bataaviya.
So dear brothers and sisters, such a glorious body, we are also going to receive one day.
Maate priya bhai beno, apna pan avuj mahimit shariro ek divas mar shet.
And another important thing is, this body can eat, and without food also, it can survive.
Ane biji ek adbut babat ey hashet, ke aje shariro shet, te khai pan shak shet, kharak vagar pan jivi shak shet.
Because Christ, when he was, he stood in the midst of the disciples.
Karun ke krish jar shishyoni madhyi ubharaya.
He asked food from them, and he ate that.
Tare tevne tevni pashe kharak mangyo, ane tev, ane par to pravu iswe te khadu.
This is the great thing, it is going to happen to every one of us.
Ane a mahan bina apna sarva ne maate banwani shet.
So the second thing is, that we are going to receive glorious body.
Biji babat shet, te ey shet, ke apna mahimavan shariro mar shet.
So dear brothers and sisters, the third thing is.
Ane triji babat ban shet, te ey shet.
Uh, the fourth thing is, sorry.
Maaf karjo, je uchkai jawana saban ma choti vaat thi shet.
And we all will be taken up into heaven.
Je sarva prabuna lok tev akashma chaliya jashet.
This is going to happen in seconds.
Ane aakhna palkara mati ban shet.
So Paul writes in First Corinthians, chapter fifteen.
Pela karanti na pandar ma dhayi ma.
From verse fifty to fifty-four.
Pachasmi kalam thi, choppanmi kalam sudhi, paul lakhey shet.
First Corinthians, chapter fifteen, from verse fifty-four.
Pelu karanti pandarmo dhayi, pachasmi kalam thi agar.
So verse fifty-one, fifty-two, let us read altogether.
Ek kavanne bavanmi kalam ach, apre sathhe vanchiye.
Behold, I show your mystery. We shall not all sleep, but we shall be changed. In a moment, in the twinkling of an eye, at the lost trump, or the trumpet shall sound, and the dead shall be raised in corrupt. And we shall be changed. So here it is written, in a moment, in the twinkling of an eye.
Ek sharma aakhna palkarama, apre badlay jaisu.
So what a wonderful thing it is.
Ane kevi adbut babat hashet.
In a very, very small time, our body is going to change into glorious body.
Ek sharma apra shariro mahimavan shariro ma badlay jashet.
Today, the power of our Lord Jesus Christ.
Eto apra pravu isu krishno samarthiya shet.
So just observe, think about the people around you.
Ave tamari aspas je loko shet, emna vichar karo.
When they close their eyes and, after, before they open, will not be there.
Ane tev aankh band kare na pacha khole, te pela tev na hoy.
Such a thing will happen on that day.
Ey divase avij bina ban shet.
That's why the entire world will be filled with great confusion and chaos.
Maate akhi jagat gunchvaada thi, ane mushkil yo thi bharai jashet.
So another important thing I want to tell to you is, when it is going to happen?
Ane biji agat yani vaat je keva chaucho, te ey babat kya re ban shet?
So for that, I'm not going to talk about the exact time and date.
Ane je khare kharo samay ke tarik tev kevanon nathii.
In this world, there are some confusions are there, people are preaching some things.
Ane duniya ma ghana gunchvaada shet, loko ghani vaato prachar karta hoy shet.
So three things we need to know.
Panchra vaato jaanva jevi shet.
Some people are telling, this is going to happen before tribulation.
Kitlak loko em keh shet, vipattina samay pela, prabuna lok uchkai jashet.
This is called pre-tribulation rapture.
Ane loko ene pre-tribulation rapture keh shet.
The second thing people believe is, this, this is going to happen in the mid-time of tribulation.
Bijja kitlak shet, jev evu keh shet, na na, vipattina samay ma prabuna loko uchkai jashet.
So this is called mid-tribulation rapture.
Maate tev mid-tribulation rapture tene keh shet.
Some people are thinking, it will happen after the tribulation, after the sufferings.
Kitlak ey pramane keh shet, vipattina samay pachi prabuna lok uchkai jashet.
So this is called post-tribulation rapture.
Ane tene tev post-tribulation rapture keh shet.
But dear brothers and sisters, what we believe, what our, the elders teach is, it is going to happen pre-tribulation time.
Parantu je vaato apre shikhiya shet, te ey shet, ke vipattina samay pela, prabuna lok uchkai jashet.
So it is, God has given us such a great promise, we are not going to be there in the time of tribulation.
Vipatti kaal ma vishvasyo re shet nahi.
Only after church taken up, taken away, the tribulation will fall on this earth.
Mandriu uchkai jashet, pachi duniya par vipatyo av shet.
So let us turn to Romans, chapter eight, verse one.
Romans na patra atmo dhayi, ane tene pele kalam.
Let us read altogether.
A kalam apre sathhe vanchiye.
There is a, Paul expressed this thought in that words.
Ane a vicharne paul, a kalam ma varnavay shet.
There is therefore now no condemnation to them which are in Christ Jesus, who walk not after the flesh but after the spirit.
Emaate jeu krish tisu ma shet, tevne havedandagnan nathii.
So there is no condemnation for the people who believed in Lord Jesus Christ.
Pravu isu krishma jeu shet, tevne havedandagnan nathii.
The time of tribulation means, it is the condemnation time.
Ane vipattino samay te dandagnano samay shet.
God's judgment is going to fall on this earth.
Aa jagat par devno nyai shasana avnar shet.
God going to take vengeance against his enemies.
Pravu tene dushmanoni saame veer lenar shet.
But so dear brothers and sisters, we are no more under the condemnation.
Pan apre bhaiyo ane bheno, dandagnan niche nathii.
So that's why we can say, rapture is going to happen before tribulation.
Maate apna kayi shakhiye, ke vipatti kaal pela, prabuna lok uchkai jashet.
So remaining things are not right teachings.
Ane biji je shikshaan shet, te kharu shikshaan nathii.
And another important thing what I want to tell is.
Ane biji agat yani vaat je keva chaucho.
It can happen at any time.
Ek gamay tare bani shake shet.
So it can happen at this moment also.
Aap pare pan bani shake.
So many people, they are thinking it may happen after some time, some years.
Ane kitlak loko em mantha hoy shet, kitlak samay pachi, kitlak varsho pachi uchkai jawani bina ban shet.
This is not at all the right thinking for believers and even unbelievers.
Vishvasyo ke avishvasyo maate, a vicharva yogya nathii.
So dear brothers and sisters, it can happen at any point of time.
Maate vishvasi, priya bhai bheno, gamay tare uchkai jawani bina ban shet.
How can we say that?
Apna kay rite hum kayi shakhiye.
Because all the signs and prophecies are fulfilled, that, that should happen before the rapture.
Karun ke uchkai gaya pela na, je tamam nishanyo ke chin ho, te pura thai chukea shet.
So in Matthew's Gospel, chapter twenty-four, God, Lord Jesus Christ, he thought about all the signs and the things that are going to happen before the rapture.
Mathina chauvisma dhayi ma uchkai jawa pela, je nishanyo pravu iswe api shet, te badi puri thai chuki shet.
So in Matthew's Gospel, chapter twenty-four, from verse one to fourteen, we can see the things that are going to happen before rapture.
Mathina chauvisma dhayi ni pele kalam thi, chaudmi kalam sudhi, uchkai jawa pela je binao ban shet, tene vaat vanchiye shet.
And the rest of the verses, they describe about the things that are going to happen before the second coming.
Ane baki ni je kalamo shet, te pravu isu na punragaman pachi pela shu thashet, eni vaat karay shet.
So if you observe all those things, all those things have already happened.
Ane jo tamme ey vadi vaato ne dhyan ap ho, te ey vadi binao lagbak bani chuki shet.
For easy, for our easy understanding, I have divided these things into seven groups.
Ane apra samajne maate, ene saath vivadma hume chuchu.
So the first thing Christ explained about, the prophecies concerning the nation Israel.
Ane pravu isu krishte je vaato kari, ene pele vaat shet ey shet.
Uh, in, let us turn to Book of Ezekiel, chapter twenty.
Ezekiel na pustak na vishma dhayi ma.
Let us read verse twenty-four.
Aneni chauvismi kalam.
Book of Ezekiel, chapter twenty, verse twenty-four.
Ezekiel, vishmo dhayi, ane chauvismi kalam.
Because they had not executed my judgments, but had despised my statutes, and had polluted my sabbaths, and forgive me. Ezekiel, chapter thirty-four, verse thirteen.
Maaf karjo, Ezekiel na pustak, chautrismo dhayi, ane tirmi kalam.
Book of Ezekiel, chapter thirty-four, verse thirteen.
Ezekiel, chautrismo dhayi, ane tene tirmi kalam.
Dear brother.
Vari hun temne videshya mathi kadi lavish, ane bija desha mathi temne bhiga karish, na temne temna putana desha lavish. Hun temne Israel na parvato par vedavane kante, tatha deshni sarva vasti vadi jaga oma charish.
And I will bring them out from the people, and gather them from the countries, and bring them to their own land, and feed them upon the mountains of Israel, by the rivers, and in all inhabited places of the country. This is the prophecy that should be fulfilled before the rapture.
Uchkai gaya pela, aav bhavishya vani puri thavi joiye.
So this is already fulfilled.
Ane a puri thai chuki shet.
If you observe closely the nation Israel, you can understand it.
Ane jo tamme Israeli loko ne ke praja ne dhyaan thi juvo, to a bina. Sarva Israeli na desh thap.
To the, the prayed all, all over the countries, they came back to their country.
Ane sarva yehudyo jaa ki duniya ma vikher ayla, tev putana desha paachaavi raya shet.
In the afternoon, I was talking with the brother Bharat.
Bharat bhai ni sathhe baparva vaat karto.
There is a graveyard, even that the Jewish graveyard is there.
Ane tya ek yehudyo no kabrashtan pan shet.
So already, the Jews already left from this place.
Ane yehudyo a jagya mathi chaliya gaya.
Even I, when I visited Kerala, I saw one synagogue there.
Ane Kerala ma ek synagogue ke sabbasthan me jiyu.
Even from there, all the Jews, they went to their country.
Ane sabbasthan mathi pan jitla yehudyo bada putana desha jata raya.
Like from every country, all the Jews, they are going back to their nation, Israel.
Dar ek desha mathi, putana desh Israel ma, yehudyo pacha fari raya shet.
So from all the countries, already they left.
Ane mota bhagna desha mathi, tev pacha gaya.
Still, there's few people here and there, many people are there in USA and from Russia, some people are there in Russia.
Ane kitla ek ajio Amerika ma, Rushya ma baki shet.
So they are also going to be gathered together into their country.
Ane tev pan putana desha pacha lava shet.
This is the promise of God.
Ato devni pratigna shet.
So dear brothers and sisters.
Priya bhaiyo ane bheno.
Russia is refusing to relieve these Jews to go back to their country.
Russia yehudyo ne putana desha pacha jawa deva rajyati.
People say, if all the Israelis, they gather together, they will become mighty power on this earth.
Karun ke tev em keh shet, ke jo bada Israelio bhiga thai gaya, to tev aa prithvi par bau shakti shaadi, ey vishakti bani jashet.
That's why they are refusing to relieve them from their country.
Maate putana desha mathi emne nikadva dehta nathii.
But in Book of Ezekiel, it is written, God is going to come on to the north to deliver this, his people.
Parantu Bible keh shet, ke iswar uttar ne keh shet, ke mara loko ne jawa de.
So if you observe the world map, exactly from Israel, the north is Moscow.
Ane jo tamme naksho juvo, to Israeli barabar uttar ma, Moscow shet.
So Moscow is the capital city of Russia.
Ane Moscow, te to is, Russia no muttu sheer shet.
So God is going to come on, so that it will deliver all his people.
Ane pravus, agna kar shet, ne putana sarva loko ne tev tyahti jawa de.
So dear brothers and sisters, this prophecy already fulfilled.
Maate valao, aje bhavishya vani, te puri thai chuki shet.
So Israel, the nation Israel found.
Israeli na desh ke rajya sthapiu shet.
All the people, Jewish people, they are returning to their country.
Yehudyo putana desha pachaavi raya shet.
So whatever God has told, already fulfilled.
Dev je karu, te puru thai rehu shet.
The second sign, the second prophecy is.
Biji bhavishya vani.
So we can, if you see Matthew's Gospel, twenty-four, that so many mighty things and wonderful things will happen in the skies.
Mathini swartana chauvisma dhayi pramane, akash ma ghana adbut chin ho thashet.
So nowadays, people are seeing the asteroids approaching the earth.
Ane adivasuma loko joi raya shet, ke je asteroid se prithvi taraf dasi aave shet.
So now they are, they are sending the telescopes, they can see the galaxies and everything.
Ane tayar te, telescope vagare mokli nathii, je bada galaxy shet, te tev joi shake shet.
Even though they have so many cameras, they are not able to understand what is going to happen in the, the universe.
Ane atla bada emni pashe camera hawa chatae, je sruti ma ke brahman ma shu thai rehu shet, te tev samji shakta nathii.
So recently, I read in the newspaper, there is some blast that, that happened on the sun.
Ane thoda samay pela, samachar patra ma me vanchiyo, ke surya ma pan dhada ko thailo shet.
So there was, all these things, the wonderful things, the mighty things that, that happen in the, in the skies.
Maate akash ma pan a adbut chin ho thai raya shet.
So we need to understand, when these things are happening, the time is very near.
Jar abadi binao baney, tare apre samajwani jaroor shet, ke samay pashe shet.
And also, the third signs of.
Ane triji nishani.
Let us turn to Matthew's Gospel, twenty-four, verse eight.
Mathini swarta chauvismo dhayi, ane tene atmi kalam.
Matthew's Gospel, chapter twenty-four, verse eight, let us read altogether.
Mathi chauvismo dhayi, atmi kalam.
Seven, salary seven.
Saathmi kalam, kem ke praja praja ne virud, tatha rajya rajya ne virud ut shet. Dukaro tatha markiyo, tatha thikaane thikaane dhrati kam thashet, pane bada to dukhon no aram ba shet.
So twenty-four, verse eight, let us read altogether, eight, eight. So here, it is written, all these things are the beginning of the sorrows. Uh, in the seven, in the last part, it is written like this, there shall be fermines, pestilence, and earthquakes, and in diverse places.
Ane thikaane thikaane dukaro, markiyo, tatha dhrati kam thashet.
So things that going to, that are happening on this earth.
Ane a prithvi par je binao bani raichet.
This is another important signs to understand that rapture is so near.
Ane a biji agat yani nishani shet, je apna keh shet, ke uchkai jawana samay pashe shet.
There will be fermines.
Dukaro thashet.
Already, the human being, the people experienced so many fermines on this earth.
Aa prithvi par ghana bada dukaron no loko ey samno karyo shet.
If you, recently, if you heard about UK.
Ane je UK vishesh sambadi hoy to.
This is the country that receives good rain every year.
Ate evu desh shet, ke jahan sder varshet, sarva varsaad varshet.
But now, the terrible thing is, they are experiencing the water scarcity.
Parantu adivasuma tev paani ni tangi anu bavi raya shet.
The temperature is very high.
Ane je garmi te bau adhi raichet.
They are giving water for some time period.
Ane tya tev, amok kala ko maatech paani aaphe shet.
There is a lot of scarcity about the water.
Ane paani ni tangi ubhit hai.
They never imagined such a thing will happen to this United Kingdom.
Ane UK ma avi prakarni mushkil yo ubhit, hashet, evu kya re, tev ei kalpiu pan notu.
They are, they are expecting the great famine may happen in the United Kingdom.
Ane tev ey vishasharakhey shet, ke emne beek shet, ke UK ma bhare dukar pare.
So already, we are seeing, we are hearing about fermines.
Maate apre dukar vishesh joiye shet.
We are hearing about earthquakes.
Ane apre dhrati kam vishesh sambadiye shet.
And also, we experience a terrible COVID disease.
Ane apre je bhankar COVID ena vishesh sambadiyu.
The entire humans never experienced such a problem on this earth.
Ane aa prithvi par mana hoy, aava prakarni samasya no kya re samno karyo nathii.
So the COVID made the world upside down.
Ane a COVID eh, to duniya ne uthal pathal karina khichet.
It entered every field.
Ane dar ek dar ek sthar mati pravishet.
It brought so many changes on the, on this earth.
Ane a prithvi par anali de kitla bada fair faro thai gaya.
In the history, if you observe the church history.
Ane jo mandri na itiyas ma tamai juvo.
In everything that, for evil things that happened on this earth, churches used to gather together and pray.
Ane je kai duniyama banti dukhna samayoma, emma mandri bhegi thain prashna karti.
But this time, the COVID is totally different.
Parantu aveno je COVID te judo che.
Because of COVID, the church could not gather together.
COVID ne karane mandri ekthi thai shakti noti.
So dear brothers, such a great pestilence happened already.
Mate avi bahre markio thai rai che.
And we are hearing about the great diseases, the viruses that are going to come in the future.
Ane bhavishya ma pan je bada virus avana che, te vishesh apde sambadiye che.
We can say, this is the beginning of tribulation.
Apde am kai shakie, ke a to dukhon no aram che.
So before tribulation, the church must be taken away.
Ane a dukho aavche, e pela to mandri ne uchkai jashche.
So that's why the signs on the earth that is already fulfilled.
Mate prithvi par abadi nishanyo puri thai rai che.
So the rapture can happen at any point of time.
Mate uchkai jawani bina, gamet yaare bani shake che.
The fourth group of signs is.
Ane je chhoti nishanyo no.
We can see concerning the nations and kingdoms of this earth.
A jagat na je rajyo ane prjaao tani vaat.
Matthew's Gospel chapter twenty-four, verse six and seven.
Mathini swarta chawish modi aye, chhatriyani sahti kalam.
The nations will raise against the nation.
Praja prja ne virud uchche.
There will be wars against each other, countries.
Desh desh ni virud ladaiyo thache.
So dear brothers, we are able to hear the war against the Ukraine and Russia.
Ane Russia ne Ukraini ladai vishesh apde sambadiye che.
There's so many wars happening on this earth.
Ane a prithvi par ghani ladaiyo thai rai che.
That the entire world is full of fear about the war that may happen at any point of between USA and China because of this Taiwan.
USA ane China ne vache, Taiwan ne karane gamet yaare ladai fathi nikle, evi loko ne aashanka che.
So this sign is also fulfilled.
Ane abadi nishanyo pan puri thai rai che.
So we are able to hear the wars.
Mate apde ladaiyo vishesh sambadiye che.
So dear brothers and sisters, these things also, this thing also tells us, the rapture is so near.
Mate aava to aapne ke che, ke uchkai jawano samai samip che.
The fifth group of signs that described by Lord Jesus Christ is.
Prabhu Isu Krista ape li nishanyo no panchmodu.
Let us turn to Matthew's Gospel chapter twenty-four.
Mathini swarta chawish modi aye.
And verse twelve, let us read altogether.
Tani barmi kalam, sathe vanchiye. Anyay vadi jawana karanti ghana khara no preem thandho thai jashche.
So dear brothers and sisters, here it is written, and because of iniquity, so shall abound, the love of many shall wax cold. So God is telling about the increased wickedness on this earth.
Ane Prabhu nu vachana aapne ke che, ke anyay vadi jashche.
So this world is now, if you see, there is lot of wickedness, wickedness grew to its highest degree.
Ane jo jagat ma tamai juvo, to duniyama anyay chek para kaas tahe panchailo che.
The terrible sinful things are happening on this earth.
Je bhankar papist binao prithvi par bani rai che.
People doesn't have any fear and they do not have fear, but they are doing all the iniquities and wicked things without having any conscience.
Ane loko ne ve bik ke sharam jevo kashu rau na thi, je ne karane, koi pan je ne vivek na hoy, e pramane loko kam karri raya che.
So the world is full of selfishness.
Loko swarti bharaila che.
The people became self-lovers.
Ane swa premio baniya che.
There is no love at all in between even families and brothers and sisters.
Ane kutumboma preem rau na thi, bhai bhenoma preem rau na thi.
So because of the growing wickedness, the love shall wax, became cold.
Anyay vadi jawana karane ghana khara no preem thandho thai jashche.
That's why we can see the murderers, rapes and the robbers and everything that happening on this earth.
Ane a sarva prakarna je khono, ane jat jat na papist bhabo to, tene apde banti joiye che.
The girls trafficking, so many things are happening.
Ane kitli bada kanyaon ane tevo upadi lei jai che.
So how terrible we can see the ISI they're doing on this earth.
Ane ISI na je loko keva bhankar kario pan karta hoy che.
So the wickedness is grew to its top point.
Ane je je ne ke dushta para kaas tahe pancheli che.
So man is not, not at all living like a man, but he's became a cruel animal.
Mate manas ni jeem jivto na thi, pan krur praniyo jiva thai gaya che.
And they do not have any consent, they not able to think about them.
Vivek emne rau na thi, potana vishesh vichari shakta na thi.
Their pride about their wicked things.
Ane potana dushta tanu tevo ne ghaman che.
This is another important sign that this world is going to end.
Ane a ek agatyani nishani che, ke a jagat no ant avano che.
When the sinful nature of Swarman Gomara increased to top, God punished it by pouring out his fire upon them.
Sadoman Gomorana je papist papo vadi gaya tyaare, deve sadoman Gomorana upar potano ko bursavyo.
Before that happened, God snatched away the family of Lord.
Ane baniu te pela, lot na kutum ne Prabhu etyahti baharkadi li.
In the same way, he's going to snatch away the church.
Ej rite Prabhu mandri na uchki leche.
So dear brothers, and this is important sign, we need to know.
Mate priya bhai bheno, a agatyani nishani che, je apde jaanvi joiye.
So as you see, the wickedness increasing in this world, you must think about the Lord's coming, you have to prepare yourself.
Jara anyay vato tamai juvo, tyaare Prabhu na agman vishesh vichar karo.
And also, Lord Jesus Christ described about the signs that going to happen towards the church.
Ane mandri ma je banche, tani vaat pan Prabhu ke che.
In these days, the church is affected in so many ways.
Adhi vasma mandri par kitli asaro thai rai che.
So there is a persecution on this earth.
Ane jagat ma tri vishwasiyona upar satavni.
In Matthew's Gospel chapter twenty-four.
Mathini swarta chawish modi aye.
Verse nine, it is written like this.
Nahu mi kalam maam lakhelu che.
Then they shall, they deliver you up to be afflicted and shall kill you and you shall be hated of all nations for my name's sake.
Jara tevo tamne vipati ma nakche, na tamne mari nakche, na mara naam nalide sarva prjaao tamaro dvesh karche.
This talks about the persecution that happened to the church.
Mandri ma je vipati avi rai che, tani te vaat karay che.
So that persecution has increased to its highest degree.
Satavni upan bauj vadi rai che.
Many places believers are in a great turmoil.
Ane ghani jagyaoma vishwasyo bau dukhma che.
People are not, they are intolerable about the believers. The people in the world, they are very, they're not able to tolerate the believers.
Ane jagat na loko vishwasyon ne saaki shakta na thi.
So they hate believers.
Tevo vishwasyon ne dhikkaray che.
So they hate Christ, that's why they hate the believers.
Tevo Kristne dhikkaray che, mate vishwasyon ne dhikkaray che.
So this is another important sign that Lord is going to come soon.
Ane aapne agatyani nishani che, ke Prabhu jaldi avi raya che.
And the second thing is, there are many false preachers in this world.
Ane biji bhabat a jagat ma ghana juttha ubdeshako ubhathaya che.
Let us turn to Matthew's Gospel twenty-four, verse eleven.
Mathini swarta chawish modi aye, atmii kalam.
And many false prophets shall raise and shall deceive many.
Ane juttha prabodhako ghana uchche, na ghana ne bhulavche.
Nowhere, the biggest threat for the church is false preachers.
Ane mandri ne mate je sau thi motak khatro, te to juttha ubdeshako che.
The devil is using the false preachers and it is snatching away even the chosen people.
Ane shatro te juttha prabodhako no upiyok karine, je pasan karela che, emne pan te bhulave che.
Many believers, they are following these false people and they are deceived by them.
Ane ghana loko che, jevo aava juttha pracharako ni paachad jaini tyaama chhetraya che.
The deception that is happening to their lives is, they are going away from Christ.
Ane je bhulavama tevo padaya che, te to e che, ke tevo Kristi door jai raya che.
Instead of worshiping, instead of glorifying Lord Jesus Christ, they are glorifying people, men.
Ane Prabhu ne mahima aapwa ne badle, manasone aje mahima madhi rau che.
So Christ is already replaced by the, by the false preachers in their heart.
Ane itla mate, Kristni jagya e, juttha prabodhako emna raday ma vasay.
But still, they're thinking, they're believers, they're going to be taken up in the rapture.
Te em chatae tevo mane che, ke eme uchkai jaisho.
This is what Christ explained when he was on this earth.
A prithvi par Prabhu hataa, tyaare temne a vaat kai.
So dear brothers and sisters, if you observe, there are so many thousands, millions of false preachers on this earth.
Ane a prithvi par ghana hazaron, lakho eva juttha prabodhako.
Why they are increasing in such a way?
Shama tari te vadi raya che.
Because the world is going to end soon.
Karan ke a jagat no ant pasche che.
Satan knows very well, his time is very short.
Shaitan ne khabar che, no samai pasche che.
So Satan is using the false preachers like angels of light.
Mate shaitan aava juttha ubdeshako ne, prakashna duth no vesh daran karine laave che.
So we should be very, very careful about these false preachers.
Mate aava juttha ubdeshako vishesh bau saavchit reju.
We should not believe every spirit.
Ane darek atma par vishwas.
We must discern, we must discern whether it is right treat or wrong spirit.
Apde ani parak karvi joiye, ke a atma dev taraf thi che, ke nai.
If you are careless, you will be captured by them.
Jo tamai bedarkar resho, to tevo tamne jakri leche.
Many, many believers who were there in the past, now they are going after them.
Ane ghana vishwasyo jevo satyama chalta tha, aje tevo ni paachad chali raya che.
Dear brothers and sisters, be careful.
Mate vishwas, bhai bheno saavchit reju.
This is another important sign.
Bijji ek agatyani nishani che.
So these, we should know, the Lord's written is very soon.
Prabhu nu agman najik che.
We should not follow human beings, but we should follow Christ.
Mate manasone nai, pan Prabhu ne anu sariye.
And in verse ten, it is written like this.
Satmi kalam maam lakhelu che.
And then shall many be offended.
Ane te viraaye ghana thokar khache.
Many will be offended before the rapture.
Ane uchkai jawa pela ghana thokar khache.
That means they, when they face sufferings, they don't want to follow Christ, they will be offended, they will leave Christ.
En ort ek jare kai dukh ke mushkeli aave, tyaare tevo Kristne chhodi deshe, ani paachad chalva chaache.
That means there will be, the compromise life will be increased in the church.
En ort ek mandri ma, bada ni sahte ek thai jau, eje prakarno atma, te prabhar hashche.
People, the believers, they don't want to live for Christ, but they always live for themselves.
Vishwasyo Prabhu mate nai, pan pota mate jiwaa lakshche.
In order to receive what they want, they will be compromised with the word of God.
Potana je joiye che, te mera va mate, dev na vachani sahte, tevo ban chod karta reshe.
They will be offended by the, by Jesus Christ.
Ane Prabhu Isu Kristna lidhe, tevo thokar khai che.
They don't want to live for him.
Te ne mate tevo jiwaa chata na thi.
They don't want to suffer for him.
Prabhu ne mate dukh hetva chata na thi.
They don't want to face shame for him.
Te ne mate sharam vetva chata na thi.
So they don't want anything for, they want only the fame and honor of this world.
Mate a jagat no man ane mahima tevo shottaa hoy che.
So that's why there is like compromise life is increasing in the church day by day.
Mate mandri ma ban chodnu jivan bau saav dekhai che.
Believers, they come to church, but there is compromised life in them.
Vishwasyo mandri ma to aave che, pan ban chodnu jivan jive che.
Externally, they appear like believers, but they're not approaching, they're receiving the power of Lord Jesus Christ.
Baharti to vishwasyo jiva dekhai che, pan dev na samarthi, tevo ni paache rau na thi.
They're not living a sacrificial life.
Ane balidan purna jivan tevo jivta na thi.
They do not want to suffer for Christ.
Kristne mate sahan kara tayar na thi.
They want everything like the holy people.
Jagat na loko ni jeem, te emne baddu joiye.
This sort of compromise is increasing in the churches.
Ane mandri ma a prakarno je ban chodnu jivan te vadi rau che.
This is another important sign that tells us, the rapture is so near.
Ane biji ek agatyani nishani che, je ke che, ke uchkai jawano samai pasche che.
So dear brothers and sisters.
Mate priya bhai bheno.
The thing that happened to church tells us, the time is very near.
Mate mandri ma je bhabo to bani rai che, dev pan jaanave che, ke Prabhu nu agman nikat che.
There is increase in persecution.
Satavni vadi rai che.
False preachers are increased.
Ane juttha prabodhako vadi raya che.
The compromised life is increased.
Ban chodnu jivan vadi rau che.
So dear brothers and sisters, we need to know, the rapture is so near.
Ane Prabhu nu agman.
Matthew's Gospel twenty-four, verse fourteen.
Mathini swarta chawish modi aye, na chaudmi kalam.
Let us read altogether. Sathe vanchiye. And this gospel of the kingdom shall be preached in all the world for a witness. And then shall end come. So Christ is telling about the evangelical work that is going to happen on this earth.
This swarta.
Gospel. You see, the electronic media, in these good days, the gospel is preached everywhere.
Ane aaj sarva media che, te dwara swarta khune khune panchi gayi che.
So everyone now know, Christ is the Lord, is the Lord.
Ane loko ne khabar padhi che, Isu Krist Prabhu che.
This gospel is preached to everyone.
Ane swarta darekne prachar thai rau che.
So dear brothers and sisters.
Mate priya bhai bheno.
All these signs are fulfilled already.
Abadi nishanyo puri thai rai che.
The prophecy is concerned to nation Israel fulfilled.
Ane Israel sabandhi ni bhavishya vaanee.
The sky, the signs in the sky, we are able to see with our eyes.
Akash na banao apde joi raya che.
The signs on the earth, we can see with our eyes.
Ane prithvi par banti binao.
The signs that going, happening between kingdoms and nation, we are able to hear.
Rajya ane prjaao ni vache ni binao apde joi raya che.
We are able to see, the wickedness is getting created to the top level.
Ane apde joiu anyay khob vadi gayo che.
So we are able to see that the prophecy concerning the church.
Ane mandri sabandhi ni bhavishya vaanio puri thai.
And also, the evangelical work is almost done.
Ane swarta no kario pan lagbhagave puru thaiu che.
So dear brothers and sisters, everyone, they heard about Lord Jesus Christ.
Mate lagbhag badaye Prabhu Isu ni vaat sambadi che.
So now, we know the Lord's time is very, very near.
Apde jaanie che, Prabhu nu agman nikat che.
That's why I want to tell again, the rapture can happen at this moment also.
Mate keva kai shaku che, ke a pare pan Prabhu na loko uchkai jai shake che.
We need to look for it.
Mate apde ni vaat jovi joi.
We need to prepare ourselves.
Potana tayar kara joiye.
So dear brothers and sisters, after the rapture.
Uchkai gaya pachi.
The terrible things are going to happen on this earth.
A prithvi par bhankar binao.
The terrible thing is the tribulation.
Ane je bhankar binaa te vipati che.
Man cannot live in such a, cannot, cannot bear such a great sufferings.
Ane itla dukho padche, ke manasone jiwu kathan thai padche.
For the believers, believers.
Pan vishwasyo mate.
It is a very joyful day.
Bau anannote divas hashche.
They will taken away from this wicked world.
Hadush jagat mahti tevo ne uchki leva maavche.
They will enter the glory of God.
Tevo dev na mahimama pravesh.
They will rejoice with him forever and ever.
Prabhu Isu saade sada anand karshche.
But it will be sorrowful day for the people who left behind.
Apne jevo rey jashche, tevo ne mate bau dukhna divas banche.
So dear brothers and sisters, why it is a sorrowful day for them?
Shama tedi dukhna divas?
They will be separated from their good, their loved ones.
Enna priya janoti tevo ikhota padhi jashche.
So I will read one or two verses and close.
Ek be kalam vaanchi ne ban karay.
In the same chapter, Matthew's Gospel chapter twenty-four.
Mathini swarta chawish modi aye.
Christ said another important secret.
Bijji ek rahasya Prabhu Isu ke che.
Verse forty and forty-one, let us read altogether.
Chalis ane ek tari smi kalam.
Then shall two be in the fame, the one shall be taken and the another left. Two women shall be grinding at the mill, the one shall be taken and the other left. And two people will be lying in the bed, one will be taken away, another will be left. You can see that in Luke's Gospel chapter seventeen, verse thirty-four. All these things tells about the separation.
Ane a badhi bhabo to alak padinaakche, e vaat appan ne bata.
The believers will be separated from non-believers.
Ane vishwasyo vishwasiti judo karina che.
So dear brothers and sisters, this is a terrible separation.
Mate priya bhayo ane bheno aaj eh alaktaate bhankar hashche.
So if your father and mother, they are believed, they will be separated from you.
Ane jo tamara matpita vishwasi hashche, to tevo tamara thi alakthai jashche.
So you are, you are all here in this place.
Ane tamai aavda a jagat ma sho.
We are rejoicing with the singing, in singing.
Apde bada sathe mori gi.
We are enjoying the fellowship.
Apde sangat ne mani.
But if you don't receive Lord Jesus Christ, you will be left behind.
Pan jo tamai taran nai pamo, to tamai.
All other will be, all other will be taken away into the heavenly glory.
Bija bada uchkai jashche.
And another thing is, it is eternal separation.
Ane biji bhabat e anandu kar ni alaktaat hashche.
In Luke's Gospel chapter sixteen, verse twenty-six, you can see that.
Loke ni swarta soul ma diye.
There is a great gulf between the lodgeress and the rich man.
Je shrimand ane laajras ni vache, mootti khaye aveli hati.
So that gulf cannot be filled, it cannot be built, no bridge can build on that.
Ane ek khai upar koi bridge bani shake em na tu.
So that means it is eternal separation.
En ort ke te sanathan kaad mate ni alakta.
So if you missed this grace period, you will never get it again.
A kroopa na samay ne jo chuki jasho, to fari bija samay marse.
So if you miss this opportunity, you will never get it again.
Kada aaj aapar chuki jasho, to biji marse nai.
So this evening dear brothers and sisters, if you are not accept Lord Jesus Christ, receive him at this point. So the rapture is going to happen at any point of time. So if you are, if you are not a child of Christ, Lord Jesus Christ, you will be left behind. So you will be separated from your parents. You will separate from fellow believers. You will be eternally separated from all these joyful things. So it is the will of God that you should not enter into eternal hell fire. That’s why this time you are here. God, God is speaking to you. Give your heart to him. As soon as possible. Jesus Christ told Jackie, “Come down quickly, I should be in your house today.” Immediately came down and he received Lord Jesus Christ. That’s why he became the child of Abraham. He became the child of heaven. So in the same way if you receive immediately, you will immediately you will become the child of the heavenly glory. Even if it has, rapture may appear now, you will be with the Lord in the eternity. But if you neglect all these things. If you don’t look at all these things. If you don’t understand these signs. You will, you will miss the great opportunity God given you graciously. It is not the will of God. God is graciously giving this opportunity to every one of you. Quickly receive Lord Jesus Christ as your personal Savior. Then you will be taken up in the rapture. You will be with him forever and ever. So if you left behind, it is a terrible thing. Don’t get that thing in your life. Let us bow down before the Lord. Let us think about all these things. Dear brothers and sisters, these are not some stories. These are the truths that are written in the word of God. These are the things that got taught by Lord Jesus Christ. The word of God is true. God exalted the word of God above his name. The heaven and merit may pass away but the word of God will never pass away. Whatever that is written in the Bible of, it is going to happen soon. So if you are in Lord Jesus Christ, be, prepare yourself to receive him. If you are not accept Lord Jesus Christ as personal Savior, as he is speaking to you today, open your heart. Invite him into your heart. Say, “I am Lord, I am sinner.” “Lord, I am going to enter into eternal hell fire.” “You came down into this world to, to take away all my punishment.” “You died for me and buried and rose again on third day.” “Lord, I am a sinner, please forgive me.” “Cleanse me with thy precious blood.” “Come into my heart.” “Help me to be with you in the eternal glory.” “Help me to be the part of this rapture.” “Help me to be with you along with the church.” If you pray this simple prayer, you will receive great salvation. And you will be with the Lord forever and ever. Can you pray like that? If anybody willing to pray like that, we want to pray for you. Please raise your hand, we will pray for you. Don’t feel shy. Don’t look here and there. Just raise your hands. Everyone close their eyes. Dear brother, may God bless you. Anyone is there? Dear sister, may God bless you. Don’t feel shy, don’t look here and there. Christ is speaking to you. And raise your hand to take you into the eternal glory. And he was in there still.
Pray.